President of the Carson City School Board to session, and I want to just start by apologizing that we are experiencing some technical difficulties which is making it so that people are not able to call in for Zoom meetings. So we are rerouting those to watch the meeting on the television and email in any public comment. And so we will be checking our computers very frequently for any public comment. And again, I apologize for that. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda as submitted. This is for possible action.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Joe, second by Dawn. Any discussion from the trustees? See none? Any public comment about the agenda? See none? I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the flag salute. Lupe, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on our agenda is a superintendent's report. This is for information only. Good evening, Mr. Stokes.
Good evening, President Walker. And board members, good evening. Happy to announce that tomorrow is the Veterans Day holiday. And I know both staff and students will be looking forward to having a day off. School will resume, however, after a day off on November the 12th. This is a save the date informational item that the community PLC will be on November the 18th at 6:00 PM. Our meeting will be held via Zoom, but it will be a special parent edition. And I'd like to invite all who might be watching to please find the information that will be on our webpage to get that Zoom information and participate. There will be some information regarding distance learning, additional information about our ESL program. There will be some information about digital citizenship and learners with special needs. So I think there will be something there for everyone. And just really like to encourage our parents to participate and to provide some insight that they might have from their position as well. Just a quick mention, the governor held a press conference tonight. And from that press conference, there was a great amount of pleading from the governor, I'll call it, asking all members of our state to do what they can to live within the standard conditions of wearing a face mask when in public, keeping meetings short. So I think maybe we should consider that in our school board meetings. But he's hoping that for 14 days, we can do what we can individually and collectively to try and restrict the increase in coronavirus illnesses. He did make one brief mention about schools where he said that he was hoping that if the number of new COVID cases begin to go down, he's hoping that schools will be able to come back in greater numbers after the first of the year. So we hope that that can be the case as well. I also like to let you know that one of our staff members, Mr. Victor Garcia Mendez, who is a paraprofessional at Mark Twain Elementary, was recognized by Governor Sisolak to represent Nevada in the national selection process of RISE. RISE is an acronym for Recognizing Inspirational School Employees. So we're very happy for Mr. Garcia. We wish him well. And with a little more lead time, we'll bring him to the board and recognize him more formally. We're proud of him and certainly grateful that he is working with our students who are learning English. I'd also like to give a shout out to Mrs. Amy Jensen's fifth grade class. And Mrs. Jensen and her students are at Boarderwick Bray. I received a number of persuasive essays from these students. And the topic was whether or not schools should be open fully to bring all students back into attendance. And it was really fun for me to hear and to read these well thought out and very well done in terms of grammar and punctuation and spelling. So hats off to those students. They gave some great ideas. There was only one student who thought that we should have no school. Finally, another save the date, December 1st at 6:00 PM, we have organized a neighborhood meeting to invite those who live around the Eagle Valley Middle School area to view the presentation that you'll see tonight. Thank you, Mr. Cornick, for putting that together. We'll also be able to answer some questions for our neighbors around the school to talk about the project and maybe help to provide information regarding that process. So with that, Mr. President, I'll turn the time back over to you.
Thank you. And we will do our best to keep our questions and comments brief so that we could meet the governor's recommendations. So next item on the agenda is board reports. This is for information only. And we'll start with Sarah Wiggins from Carson High School. Sarah, we're glad to have you back.
Hi there. So at Carson High, November's Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. And for this, we are doing a Purple Dress Up Day, November 19th and 20th. And then on both those days, we are also, Little Caesars is donating some of the proceeds to Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. Some upcoming winter events we are doing is teacher appreciation, which is going to be a breakfast on Monday for all Carson High teachers and staff. We're also planning out a lip sync battle between teachers at Douglas and Carson. And then we'll have the students' vote online. We are also, Student Council is also going to help out Salvation Army and Fish. And then some past events that we have done, we did school beautification last Wednesday, where we had some clubs pretty much go around the school and pick up trash. And then we had academic letter, wait, school beautification was two Wednesdays ago. And then last Wednesday was academic letter. And for this, you can pick up your awards that you might have missed in the guidance office. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. For Pioneer High School, trustee Wilkie.
At Pioneer, leadership expanded their kindness campaign by reaching out to local veterans. Students spent their lunch hours collecting over 40 thank you letters to be sent to 12 former service members from Gardner Ville de Sparks. Pioneer High School is proud to once again sponsor our annual Thanksgiving dinner baskets. Special thanks to the Hernandez family and the PHS student leadership for helping make this possible. And anybody that wants to get involved with that, just call Monica at the office and she will help you
For NASB, NASB is going to have our Board of Directors meeting Thursday. And so we'll probably have some information at our next meeting unless Laurel or Stacy knows anything that's happened since last report.
I do know a couple dates if you want to save them already. So the conference has been postponed to March. And the pre-conference day or the new member orientation is March 25th. And then the 26th and 27th at Harvey South Lake Tahoe are the days of the conference. And there's also a virtual orientation that's going to take place. I don't have that exact date. I think it's January 16th, but I'll get that to you.
Thank you. Board report, starting with trustee Carini. Good evening, Dawn.
Good evening. Real quick from Dr. Conley over at Eagle Valley Middle School, right after the Veterans Day holiday tomorrow, on Thursday, November 12th, and Friday, November 13th, at lunchtime for both Cohort 1 and 2, they'll be handing out attendance and academic awards. And that's all I have this week.
Thank you. Trustee Crossman.
For Fritsch Elementary, Mr. Brown explained that they're not going to be able to host the annual Turkey Trot this year. So instead, they are doing a coloring contest for each grade level. And those coloring drawings are due Tuesday, November 17th, to be turned in. And also, Fritsch staff and students would like to thank all veterans and active duty family members. They appreciate their service and to our great nation and all the sacrifices that they have made. For Fremont Elementary, Dr. Ward reports that they had an excellent participation in their Zoom and video parent teacher conferences. And she is anxiously awaiting the opportunity for grades 3 through 5 to return to school four days a week. And then also, I'd like to thank Carson High School for the fundraising efforts that they've helped put together for Carson High School teacher Kelly Gustafson, who they're selling t-shirts. And also, tonight at the Pizza Factory until 9:00 PM, they're holding a fundraiser. So if you haven't had dinner yet, go get yourself a pizza, breadsticks, or whatever else you want. And I just wanted to share, Mrs. Gustafson was a teacher to two of my boys in the health science classes. And last year at the Lake Tahoe Sprint Triathlon, I saw, I had a chance to visit with her because she swam the relay leg of that. So I know she's tough, because anybody that can swim on a Saturday morning in Lake Tahoe, 800 meters, is really tough. And I just wanted her to know that we're sending her all our prayers and cheering for her.
Certainly. I think we're all praying and pulling for her also. Trustee Wilkie. Trustee Ramirez.
So I'd like to echo Mr. Stokes' comments and recognition to Victor Garcia Mendez. I think that's a prestigious award, and that's just amazing. So in addition to your comments, Mr. Stokes, I also like to thank Christine Born for taking the time to submit this nomination because we know how busy the teachers and staff are at the schools. And she wanted to make sure that his work was recognized. So thank you to her as well. And I also want to thank him for including the parents. I'm a strong believer that if we engage the parents in the children's education, they're going to be very successful. So I also want to thank him and I also congratulate him. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Varner.
I would just like to start off by thanking the veterans, tomorrow's Veterans Day, for their service and everything they've done for our country. I think it's important that we do not forget to continue to recognize them. And speaking of veterans, the Boarderwick Bray music teacher, Mr. Katron, created a very wonderful video to honor the veterans. He incorporated students singing, students handmade posters and pictures, and students sharing their personal writings about the veterans and their significant role in our country. The video link has been shared with families through Parent Square, as well as placed on their website and Facebook page. And they would just like to go ahead and thank all the veterans for their service also. I had the opportunity to view the video. I don't know if anybody else has yet or not, but it was amazing. Brought a tear in my eye, to be honest with you. I'm just really happy that, at least Boarderwick and I think all the schools, continue to honor the veterans every Veterans Day. So I want to thank Boarderwick and also the other schools who are honoring the veterans. Now, moving on to Carson Middle School, this is a report from Mr. Sadler, the principal. The staff wanted to thank their team of custodians for doing a fantastic job keeping the building clean and safe for their staff and students. The building is cleaned exceptionally well every day because of the pride and efforts the custodians bring to work. The eighth grade science students are working hard to solve difficult problems through collaboration and experimental design. The eighth grade science teachers like to recognize the students for never giving up and for working hard to be innovators. And the leadership students have already served over 170 community service hours in their school, homes, and the community. And they will continue to earn hours throughout the rest of the school year. The students are also spreading gratitude messages during the month of November to the school staff for everything they do. The students also are learning vital signs, about vital signs, temperature, heart rate, blood pressure, and respiratory rate in health science class, and are doing the lab where they take their family members' vital signs at home. This allows the students to experiment perspective as a medical professional and opens up discussions with their family members about their health. I can testify that this is occurring because it occurred to our house last night. And I'm hoping I'm not mispronouncing these names, so I apologize if I do. The Sloan of the Month winner for November are Roberto, Roberta, Saracusi, and Kirsten Picas. And like I said, if I mispronounce a name, I apologize. The school is also proud of all their staff members and all the hard work they do every day. And with that, I just would like to thank them for all the hard work also. And that'll end my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cassioppo.
Thank you. Two quick reports, one for early childhood student support services. Dr. Lennox wanted me to let everybody know that pre-kindergarten has openings. And if you're interested in getting your child in there, to call Student Support Services at 283-2350. There's going to be an early learning and the brain breakout group that Kendra Tuttle's going to lead. And that's going to be for families. I apologize, I don't have a date or time for that. But if you're interested, you can again contact Student Support Services. And then on December 10th, 5:00 to 5:30, pre-K will host a family engagement activity. And they don't have all the details worked out, but there'll be more to follow. At the high school, and I apologize, I'm going to be looking at my phone tonight because I grabbed the wrong packet. So I'm a little behind. But the high school, Mr. Chambers wanted to let me know that the school counselors have focused on improving the equity of access to services with so many students learning remotely. They did a complete overhaul of the scholarship program so that now it's 100% digital and accessible via laptops. All apps are now either filled out via Google Docs or via their Kami system in Google. And the website is updated daily. In addition to that, counselors are hosting weekly Zoom meetings for everything from scholarship support to college sports information and hosting college recruiters to chat with interested students. The CHS Chill Room has been shared with other schools' mental health workers to provide access to all students, and it's been met with great success. They were able to do a four-year academic plan individually with all freshmen by utilizing Zoom and in-person appointments and by typing directly into IC. It used to be a large group situation, which was sometimes confusing. So given what we're going through now, I think the more they can do with these programs, the better. And then next month, the high school will be providing Christmas gifts to 15 of their most in-need students, as identified by their RAD teachers, as well as support to their MV families, foster youth, the SSWs are handling that crew. So anyway, that's what Mr. Chambers wanted to let me know. Sorry I had to read that, but that's my report for the high school and Student Support Services.
Joe gets re-elected and then starts slacking. We see how it is.
Maybe they just wore me out.
That's true.
And that's the truth. I'm tired.
You worked hard. So listening to Joe's report, I think it just goes to show how much effort it really takes to be a teacher right now and run a school. And every little thing is being impacted by these restrictions. And I think that kudos to everyone who's kind of putting their heads together and finding solutions to keep things moving forward for our students and for us as a school district. So that's great. Sealer Elementary School reports, great things are still happening. And they are already gearing up for their next round of map assessments. And so, starting November 30th, they're going to have remote learners come to the school and take their map assessments. And then the rest of the school will start their map assessments on December 8th. They report grade attendance and progress for their EL students in the tutoring sessions taking place on Monday's afternoon, Monday afternoons. And Mrs. Zona wants everyone to have a happy Thanksgiving. So and then I just wanted to also thank trustee Varner. Asked him to meet with Mr. Stokes and myself yesterday and kind of look at the superintendent's evaluation tool and see if we have any revisions or thoughts. And so certainly, I appreciate you taking the time to do a little bit extra for us. And then finally, just happy Veterans Day to all of our veterans. And I'm trying to remember, Joe, do we have any veterans on the board? I was thinking you and Richard. Okay. I just wanted to be careful before I said that. I wasn't sure. Each year kind of blends together. So thank you both for your service. So the next item on the agenda is association reports. This is for discussion only. Mr. Wallace, I can't see you. So if you want to speak, okay, thank you. And do we have any association reports from any of the other collective bargaining groups? Okay, we will move on. Next item is public comment. Comments will be accepted in person or through telephonic participation, through virtual participation via email at publiccomment@carson.k12.nv.us. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items. And members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such a matter until the matter is placed on an agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comments, speakers are asked to identify themselves for the record. Speakers are further asked to refrain from speaking over each other if participating by telephone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, whether in writing or oral, and not to simply repeat comments made by others. This is for discussion only. Do we have any public comment from members present? Seeing none. Renee, do we have any public comment?
No public comment, Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Item number seven, discussion and proposed changes to CCSD Policy 275, School Social Workers, so Schools or Safe School Professionals Program. This is for first reading and discussion only. And I'll welcome Tasha Fuson and Dave Calario. Good evening.
Good evening, President Walker, members of the board. It will just be me this evening. Mr. Calario is going to join us via Zoom, but isn't able to do so at this point in time. We are requesting just a few minor changes to School Board Policy 275, specifically with regards to the title change from Safe Schools Professionals to School Social Workers. In addition, we added another licensed employee title to that, and that is the School Mental Health Worker. Last year, we had two family therapists that worked, I'm sorry, licensed marriage and family therapists who worked for our district. This year, we don't. But under the existing licensures from the state, there are two different types of licensures. So all of our current school social workers are licensed as social workers, but the law does allow for us to hire the SMHWs as well. So that's what you're seeing reflected in the policy, is simply the name change for those two items.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the trustees? Go ahead, Laurel.
I just have one question, and it might be a stylistic thing. On the new sentence about the duties of SSWs are identified in Nevada Revised Statute, and perhaps Mr. Russell knows, should it just, should we eliminate the parentheses and just say Nevada Revised Statute 391.296 period, not have NRS in parentheses?
I think it's fine to eliminate the NRS. You would normally coin it if you were going to use it several more times in the document, because it's a standalone right there. You can eliminate it.
Happy to make that change.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, see none?
Thank you.
Yes, we'll see the next time you're back. Item number eight, informational update on school operations in the Carson City School District. This is for discussion only. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, President Walker. It has been several weeks since we have returned our pre-K through second graders back to school. And with that, I just wanted the board to be aware that to a person, all of the teachers who teach students in these areas are pleased to have their children back in school. They have talked about the growth that the students have made because they're back in school at least four days. So that regular interaction is helping tremendously. And so we're really pleased that we were able to do that. So on the heels of that step, the school principals were also interested in taking a look at bringing back students in grades 3, 4, 5, and 6. So as you know, that would be our upper grades in the elementaries, and then our sixth graders who are part of the middle schools. Just as this discussion was gaining momentum, of course, there was a large shift in the number of new cases of COVID-19, not only nationally, but here locally as well. And so because of that, and also because of some of the other challenges, if you think about putting a second grader or 25 second graders in a class, that looks quite a bit different than putting 25 fifth graders in a class. And just with the size of the students' bodies and the classroom still being about the same size, it does create some challenges for us to be able to socially distance those students. We also had some staffing considerations. And so because of those three things, those physical conditions, in addition to the higher number of new COVID cases in our area, we've decided not to pursue putting those students back into school, at least for the time being. We initially identified December 1st, which would be the first school day after the Thanksgiving holiday, as a potential time to put students back into school in these grades. But because of the conditions, and because many of our folks in the community had heard about these steps, and they had received surveys from our schools, I wanted to go on the record and let them know, have some, I don't know if it's comfort or at least information, that we're going to wait at least until the start of the second semester before we pursue this again. Many of you know that the governor spoke tonight. He's requesting personal responsibility be taken by all people in the state of Nevada, at least for the next 14 days, in hopes of turning the tide of these new cases of COVID-19. So while he gave no specific requirements or requests for schools, we're going to be carrying on as we always have. But in terms of bringing back more students to our schools, we're going to wait for a little more time. So I just wanted to get that out into the public's eyes so that they knew what was going on, and to offer this time as a potential time for board members to discuss where we are currently as a school district, or maybe ask questions about things that we might be considering in the future.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Stokes? Stacy?
Looking at the second semester and the sports sessions that are going to be starting, are we looking at anything different at Carson High? Or, because Pioneer's already in four days. Is there any talk or looking at that because of the athletics starting up?
So just for clarification, you're asking whether or not we're looking at changing the schedule for Carson High School, the daily schedule? No, it would still be maintained as it is.
With the two cohorts?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And we're still waiting for some additional guidance. I know that there are still some questions about several of the sporting activities. And that has to do with just the close contact and the nature of the game. So until we have more information on items like basketball and football, wrestling, those sports are still on hold, to my knowledge.
Thanks, Richard. I just wanted to reiterate, I had a chance to speak to some of the primary grade teachers, kindergarten through second, whose students are back in. And they, you're exactly right, they are very happy to have these students back. You know, there's always concern, of course. But these students went from really on a bad trajectory, you know, everything from a lack of even showing up to being able to engage the way the teachers would like them to, to quickly gaining ground. And, and quite a few are already coming around. So, we're seeing strides very quickly. So, I just wanted to add to that, that, you know, I too have spoken to some teachers and they're very happy to see these kids back. And we're seeing the results already.
Just, just a comment on it. Just, I've heard the same thing, that the kids that are back in school, it's, it's been so positive for them. And so, I would, I know it's not the best timing right now, but I would encourage the district to continue to work towards bringing third through fifth grade back four days a week. If, if it's making this much of an improvement in the younger kids, which of course it is, it will also be so beneficial to those grade members. And then, question for you, Mr. Stokes, is where are we at the middle school? Because there was some talk earlier about sixth graders coming back four days a week. Are the middle schoolers more, the two middle schools more prepared for that change?
We have discussed this possibility with our sixth grade principals, with our middle school principals. And they are in a good place in terms of being able to accommodate social distancing and also being able to modify the schedule enough to bring those students back. In talking as a group with the principals and with my team, we determined that coming back all at once was a better scenario. And what that does for us is it allows us to make sure we can manage the transportation portion of this. That really seems to be the part that's giving us a little bit of concern right now. We were hoping that prior to just now, that we might have the support of the state government in talking with our superintendent of public instruction. We were hoping that we might be able to have the transportation, social distancing piece waived. Because as we're talking about bringing athletics back to the schools, you can't really send a team out of, out of the city and, and still maintain the social distancing of school bus riding. And so, it's a little contradictory to say we're going to have athletics but not be able to transport them. So, something's got to happen in a state decision-making situation that allows us to maybe have some more flexibility with transportation. Because if we put grades three, four, five, and six back in our schools, that's going to have an impact on our transportation piece.
And I guess my comment on that would be, if, if it's for schools and for the needs of schooling, I think if you were to put it out there and request that parents who are able to arrange rides rather than using busing, I think, I think you'd have a lot of parents who would say, I'll drive my kid to school, so you've got enough busing. Don't let that be what stops us from being able to have four days a week in school. If there's any way to gauge that with parents, I would encourage that because I think a lot would.
Thank you.
And I would just say, Mr. Stokes, I think when we really look at, it sounds, the first of the year sounds like it's so far away, but if you look at in the life of a school, that's going to be here in the blink of an eye, we're looking at four school weeks, basically. And I support the decision to kind of slow, slowly plan it out and make sure that we're able to safely do this and meet the needs of our students and staff. And so, I appreciate the work you're doing, and I know it's, there's a lot of things to consider. So, thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is informational update on the progress of the construction project at Eagle Valley Middle School. This is for discussion only. Andrew Feeling, Mark Cornick, Mark Johnson, good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, trustees. Tonight, Mr. Cornick, Mr. Johnson will walk you through an update on Eagle Valley Middle School and the significant and exciting progress there with some wonderful visuals to give you an idea of what this will look like, not to start the next school year, but the following school year. So, I will turn this over to Mr. Cornick and Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, President Walker, trustees, Mr. Stokes. Thanks for having us back again. Seems like it was just yesterday. Today, we're, we're kind of going to run you through where we are in the process. We're about 30% into design. So, we've gotten through schematic design. Design development is scheduled to be done by mid-December, and we should have that report and set of plans by maybe first, second week of January. So, this is, it is a process. So, the first thing you're going to see here tonight is basically one of the slides that was in the update that we gave you a couple of weeks ago. A little bit, little bit of a change to it, new construction, approximately 20,000 square feet, and which would bring the capacity of the school up to about 1,000 students. The basis of, one of the reasons that we're building this project is provide equity in middle school space in town here, so that Eagle Valley and Carson Middle School are much more equal in its offerings, programs, and facilities. Our HVC will have to be expanded a bit, some upgrades, including a new cooling tower, and then some miscellaneous tenant improvements, additional parking out front, which will operate primarily as staff parking during the day and event parking during night events, sport, sporting events, et cetera. Currently, as I said, we're in design development and construction is scheduled to start June 2021. Okay. So, this is more of a timeline of where we're at and where we're going. As I mentioned, mid-January for design development. We're going to have bid documents, construction documents before that, and then bid documents by April, hoping to have bid openings first week of May. And this will put us into a period when we can negotiate the gross maximum price, the GMP. I don't anticipate the way this process has been going, that it'll take us a month to get that done. Our, our construction manager at risk, Core Construction, has been on top of this with the estimates. We've had, we got a 30-page estimate at the end of schematic, which we had never had. So, they're running us through this process in a really organized manner. Hope to have that GMP by the first week of June so that we can start construction a couple hours after that. So, this is a rendering, if you will, from the southeast, looking at the building toward the northwest. The back parking lot there is, is existing. Some of it's going to be supplanted with part of the building, but we're providing more parking out front. And this is the rendering that's looking more from the southwest. You can see the addition, walkway going from the second floor to the new, to the old building, and then a courtyard down below. And then this is actually the elevation drawing from the south of the double-stacked new building. Actually, this is the old building, sorry, with the walkway connecting the new building. And one of the reasons we put this, a couple of these photos in, because this is kind of a unique feature to the building. That door that you can see right in the middle of the building down below is currently... Okay, and then it's got to go back to that? Yeah. Okay. Perfect. All right. So, this, this is the door that I was speaking about. This is existing door, and that leads to the hallway that runs north and south on the first floor, kind of the first floor. And right above it, there's a window. There's a window right here that's kind of has an arch to it. That's going to turn into the door entry to the second story, existing building. And then, just over about in here, there's an exterior door to a computer lab that we've never been able to really access properly from the inside. So, we'll turn that into the entrance of the classroom, which will be a computer lab. And this is the floor plan of what I was just speaking about. So, this is that door, and then this is the computer room right here. It has a dividing wall right there, which is really just a partition wall, doesn't even go to the top of the ceiling. And so, you used to enter, enter this space right here, and you have to go through this room to get to this room. So, we're going to improve that entry. And then, this room becomes more of an intervention office here to be used for speech pathologist, tutoring, those kind of things. So, it's going to be a bigger room where a teacher can have maybe four students in it to work with. And then, below that, we'll have an office. And then, right over in here will be an IT server room that will serve the new building. It's kind of a unique feature, so I wanted to make sure you guys understood that. Let's go. Got double clicker going here. All right. So, this is the elevation of the new building. Five classrooms downstairs, five classrooms upstairs. Over on a side, we'll have a office space there. That's looking from the south. This is looking from the east in the parking lot in the east, and it's elevation of the building. Let's see, what can I point out? Entryway here. Couple utility rooms right here that'll go into a storage space. This is going to be some storage here. And then, we'll have some translucent panels. Some of these panels will be clear glass, some will be translucent. So, this area here is the upper STEM lab. So, there's going to be a lot of nice natural light in there. And then, on this side over here, we have an exterior stairway for egress, for safety. And this elevation is looking from the north towards south. In this space, I can point out, this is that storage area. So, we have a decent storage area, but it's already being eaten up by a sprinkler riser room because this building will have sprinklers in it, an electrical room, some heat pumps, but be adequate storage. This is where that stairway is. This is just a panel block in that. It'll be exterior stairway in existing building This is actually a really nice photo, site plan, if you will, of almost the whole property there. I think there's nearly 38 acres at that property. And so, it shows everything. Still have some, still some undeveloped land up in here. But to point out here is, this is where the new parking will be. It'll mirror the parking that's already in the front of the building, or in the front of the school. And we have the opportunity to put a pipe gate up here to close that off during the day, just for teachers, and then open it up for other events. Existing school is in the white roof, and then down below here is where the, the project will be. Feel free to ask questions. I'm just kind of zooming along here. And then, this, this just kind of shows the back, where the project area is in here, and our parking. And that's the existing bus turnaround up there. The floor plan. This is the lower floor of the project. So, there's, let's see, there's five classrooms, five classrooms right here. We have a STEM lab right here, the green room, part of the STEM lab. These are overhead doors right here, leading into the STEM lab, and then out into this really nice courtyard area that can be used for outdoor education, events, et cetera. Here, we have a general-use lavatories and a storage area. Behind the lavatories is a staff restroom, custodial closet. And then, along here is kind of a unique areas, a collaborative learning area. It's a collaborative hallway. So, it'll be some furnishings out here that can be used for one-on-one, students to work on projects together, collaboration together. And along here, we'll have some lockers that we're actually going to be moving from other places within the building. Mr. Conley has an abundance of lockers, and some of his hallways have lockers on both sides, so it's really tight in those areas. So, we'll be moving some of those down. They're older, but actually in fairly good shape. And again, this is the, this is a courtyard area. And this here will be more of like, it's, it's a sloped area, so it's going to be more of amphitheater area. So, they could use that to the central space where we'll have some power. We could have some presentations in that area. And then, back to this side, we're going to use part of the upper wall as a screen. So, they could show video up there, show movies, do presentations. And this is the upper floor plan. Again, five classrooms, some office space here and a workroom for teachers. There's one on, there's one downstairs, too, that I neglected to say. This will be the entry right here to the upstairs STEM lab, which is in this area here. Some storage for them. And then, this room here is also a small storage, but it could be more of a 3D printer area, another work area for the smaller STEM lab that's here. This is just a little kick-out above area, which will be a collaboration area in that hallway. And general use, general use restrooms here. And then, again, staff restroom and custodial closet. This is that unique feature. To get to the other building, we'll have this walkway along here. Van Werburgot is working on some wayfinding signage that goes along with Mr. Conley's sustainability theme, possibly some kind of eagle things, displays, et cetera. And then, we enter the building right there, back into the school. Computer lab right there. Getting to workout. Yes, sir?
Wondering for ADA, I don't see an elevator. I'm sure there's one in there, but do you have to have one for, since it's a two-story building?
Absolutely. We have an elevator now that has, actually, I think, four stops. We have an elevator now that has, actually, I think, four stops, Mark, four? Three stops on it. And so we, we service every floor. ADA accessible through the parking lot and actually on the first floor that connects to the, the existing building, there is a slope, but we have a ramp in there that will take care of that. Mr. Johnson and I went and toured several schools in Washoe, and this is a general use restroom in, in elementary school, Bohatch, brand-new school in Spanish Springs. The ones that we have in our design are similar to this, but they'd be turned sideways. Still have four water closets and an ADA water closet. And then your general use of sinks, hand dryers. And this is a, help me with this, Mark, cementitious. Cementitious flooring. And it'll probably use for the wet wells as well. And our final slide is currently our construction estimate is at the top there. 10,768,000 is where we're at. The specialty systems, which are listed over to the side. See if I can get that for you over here. This is our C Mar fee, our architect fee, and then all of our consultants, whether it's civil, structural, low volt, building controls. We have FF and E in there as well, furniture, environmental, WISE is environmental, I'm sure there'll be some radon in that area that we'll have to mitigate. So that's that fee. And then we're holding the 5% contingency. And again, this is at 30%. So our numbers aren't quite as accurate because we don't have the plans totally complete. I see this number probably coming down as there is about 15% contingency up in this estimate amount as well. And I think 10% of that's on design. I think we're, design's been moving along pretty, pretty well that we won't use that. So that contingency ends up coming down to close to zero by the end of your construction documents. So.
So, Mark, what, so you have 15% for increase in construction costs? Because we're looking down a year from now before we actually start construction, correct?
Well, it's, it's not just that. There's, there's about 2% in for escalation cost because they know we've been in this project for a while, and by the time we get to it, cost should escalate. Although we're seeing a trending that it's coming down a bit, so. So there's that in there. There's, the C Mar has about 2.5% on their side for their estimating, and then the design itself, because we're not, if we want to start changing a design, that's going to cost a little bit more. We hope to stay with what we got. We really like what, what we're looking at, and so we hope that that, that contingency is hardly even used for design. But we just want to hold that there, and, and when we get to the negotiation for the GMP, that contingency will be out. So they won't be bidden making their, their percentage off of the contingency that'll be lower down to zero. So there's still a lot of variables in that. Questions?
And then just how many new classrooms are we getting in this project, other than the two stems?
There's 10 classrooms in there. There's also, like I said, one or two smaller intervention-type classrooms, special ed or speech pathology, those kind of things. Those were at Principal Conley's request.
Thanks, Mark. I just had a question on the proposed site plan. New parking access aisle with the angled parking coming off of it. The way it's set up now, it's all angled, so if somebody comes in one of those two aisles and there's no parking, there's no way to loop around. Has there been any thought to, or room to allow that? Or it looks like they're going to have to circle back onto the street and come back in?
Yeah, they'll be exiting the same way as they exit now. So we bring it down into that. So there is no way to just circle. They'd have to go out and circle.
And I'm just curious, is that just because of room? It looks like we're getting a little tight.
Yeah. It's currently one way right now, so it'll be one way on the other side as well. Because it's set up, it's set up for staff parking only.
Oh, is it? Okay.
And so they'll have a gate, the gate will be open when staff comes in. So if it's full for staff, then staff will have to go around and park up top or try to park it in the back.
Gotcha. Okay.
So they'll shut it like when staff's supposed to be in.
Okay. No, good enough. I was just curious.
I was wondering, does this cost the almost $13 million? Does that include all the security issues like cameras, the security doors and all that stuff, right?
Yes, over to the right there that I was pointing out, that's one that I didn't point out, I guess. Powercom was in there for our surveillance and security. We also had all the cable and computer cabling, low-volt wire, audio enhancement for the classrooms, everything that we can think of on the consultant's side. We just don't have the cost on all of those yet. We're basing them on former costs that we had. As soon as we get those plans done, we can, in December, we can get that out and get those costs, exact costs from those vendors.
But it should be included in the almost $13 million, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Once we get the 50% plans, we'll be able to give those to all of those subconsultants that will be on our contract, and we'll give those to them when we get the 50% plans, and then they'll give us a tight cost on those.
One more question. When we had the, the presentations at the school before, one of the main concerns of the public seemed to be the traffic that we're going to involve by getting more students there. Has that been addressed? And I don't see any address in here. Has it been addressed at other places?
It's somewhat been addressed because it's, it's in the budget to do a traffic study. And we've already met with the city out there on that. So there's a couple options on that traffic study that we still need to discuss with the city, but it will be done. They already have a project out there where they want to improve that area and put more crosswalks coming from the other side. There's even talk about a traffic circle farther up by Carson River Road in that area. So probably the next time we report, we'll have more information for you on that. But yeah, traffic study.
Part of our special use permit that we are going before them is a traffic impact study that our consultant has to do, so we'll have to bring that before them.
Well, we have that information before the December 1st meeting with the public?
No, we won't have it then. Our SUP is meeting, it will be December 15th. And our, our thought was we wanted to get in front of the neighbors before they got cards in the mail about the special use permit. We wanted to talk to them about it first. And I think it'll probably take a couple months to get that done. We'll be in process at least.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation.
President Walker, if I could, I just wanted to point out the, the price tag that we're looking at now is more than what we initially budgeted for. While that price will likely come down, we'll, we'll have a better idea once we get some more of these drawings and information done. So just an expectation of what, from what we initially budgeted for the project, it will most definitely be higher. It's just a matter of how much higher. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on the process for completing the superintendent's annual evaluation for the 2020 calendar year. This is for possible action. And so just, Trustee Varner and I met with Mr. Stokes yesterday and reviewed the tool that, you know, those of us who have been on the board for a while, Trustee Wilkie and I worked with Mr. Stokes and Mr. Pavlakis and kind of revamped and put together the tool we're currently using for the past several years. And so in our meeting, one of the things that we talked about is, Trustee Varner had some ideas for adding a little bit more, a little bit more guidance in the document for trustees. But then we also talked with Mr. Stokes, and I kind of felt like that might be something to develop next year so that as we get a new superintendent, as we hire that individual, we have that tool available for them to start their goal-setting and planning from the beginning of their employment and not necessarily changing Mr. Stokes' process up this close to the end of the year, if that makes sense. But certainly, this is a time that if any of you had proposed changes or suggestions, feel free to bring them forward. Yeah, go ahead, Laurel.
Just one that I didn't even notice till just now is the first one, under leadership and district culture on the first page, should be implements rather than implement because everything else is the present tense.
Right. That's an easy one. Anything else? Okay. So this is for possible action.
Before we end the discussion though, so what timeline are we looking at now? For, when do we need to get it to Renee? When will it be on an agenda?
If, so if we approve this tonight with that edit that was just suggested, we'd ask Renee to send that out and a timeline for us to get feedback back to her. And my plan would be to have this on the next agenda, so that that, that December meeting is always a long meeting, and yeah, this is always the last thing there. So I'm trying to kind of free that up and kind of get this out of Mr. Stokes' way earlier rather than later.
So then we would have to have them back to Renee in time for the public to, to go over them too then?
Correct. Isn't that what we usually do? Because they're part of our packet.
Yes.
Would November 30th be enough time?
Not if it's at the next meeting, our next November meeting.
Renee's looking at the calendar. Give her a second.
Oh.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be one of those where Stacy can't procrastinate, I can tell already.
So the next meeting is Tuesday, February 24th, and so in order to be included in the packets and kind of tabulated, if you will, I would need to have everything, if possible, by the 19th at the very latest, because packets go out on the 20th.
It's a quick turnaround, but I, I'll also say, I think that even if we push it out, it's going to be a quick turnaround because we always end up getting a reminder from Renee, remember, I need this by tomorrow.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we leave her enough time. I'm not worried about us, because.
Yeah.
But if we have it. So you should probably make the date the 18th, because then there's always us last-minute people.
Yeah.
Not that it's me.
Not that, it would never be you, Stacy.
But if you tell me that it's the 18th, maybe I have a chance. Tomorrow. That works even better. Actually, I'm working on the evaluation for NIAA form, so it can't be tomorrow.
So like, I'll entertain a motion from the floor.
What date is it to be completed by?
I can't hear you.
November 18th? Okay.
Richard, wait, just make sure you talk into the microphone, okay?
Yeah, I will. Okay, I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the processes presented for completing the superintendent's annual evaluation for the 2020 calendar year to be completed during the November 24th meeting, is that what it was?
Yeah.
Okay. Be completed during the November 24th board meeting.
All right, we have a motion by Richard, second by Joe. Any discussion from the trustees? Don, did I see you raise your hand down there? I, I have a really hard time seeing that far down there. Did you raise your hand? Okay. Go ahead, Laurel.
Just one thing I was just going to note, because that is Thanksgiving week and school is off, which I don't know if any of the trustees are planning. If, if we move it up to that November 24th, it is the holiday week. That's the only thing I'd note.
Right, do we have any public comment?
No public comment, Mr. Walker.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number 11 on the agenda, approval of the consent agenda. This is for possible action.
I'll do a motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second by Wilkie.
All right, we have a motion from Don, second by Stacy. Any discussion from the trustees? Seeing none. Any public comment?
No public comment, Mr. Walker.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12, informational items. This is for discussion only. I think Mr. Stokes had mentioned a couple dates for us to mark down. Do we have any questions of Mr. Stokes or staff regarding upcoming events? Seeing none. Item number 13, request for future agenda topics. All right, I think we'll, I'll work with Mr. Stokes and make sure that we work towards keeping, I think we'll keep the important business on the agendas and maybe some of the stuff that is just for informational or good-to-know type stuff, we might just push that out till COVID cases come down in cooperation with the governor's requests. Next item is the adjournments. We are adjourned at 8:10, Trustee Wilkie.